And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public discussion.
I would like to get back on the agenda for a Class C road. It's been two months and absolutely nothing's been done by the secondary road crew again, or the department. The secondary road has abandoned that road. I'd like to get a crossing for winter. My option runs out in a week, a little over a week, on my bridge. And I'd like just go with a Class C road. That you guys can do. We don't need the county engineer to do a damn thing about it, because that's exactly what he's done in the last two months.
So I write to put it on the agenda for next week?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Seeing no other public discussion?
That's all I've got.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda minutes dated September nineteenth?
I'll second it.
Matt? Stecker? Any discussion?
I have a question. What's the review and approve secondary road claims?
Oh, um, yeah, his trucks came in, and so he has to... Because of the large amount, we didn't do a hand re-claim.
Just one more question?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's in the... Did you see them in the packet?
Well, I looked at the sheet and it looked to be other everybody.
Any other questions? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carried unanimous. Secondary road claims, seen our packet. Any questions? Do we need Doug to explain anything?
Been on order for a while.
Well, we canceled them once.
Right.
That was, uh, five fifty-one. You know, I looked at them the other day.
I think they got higher priced as we went on.
I'm sure they did.
Do I have a motion to approve secondary road claims?
So moved.
Motion by Stecker. I'll second it. Any discussion on it? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carried unanimous. Acknowledged Safety Committee minutes. Any questions? Seeing none, but the record show that we acknowledged them. Wellness Committee?
Do you want me to call Doug now or later?
Well, you can just well call him now. Wellness Committee? Everybody had a chance to look at it.
And the five P did not act, and that was canceled.
That was canceled?
Yeah.
Hey Doug, we're ready for you to come up if you want.
Um...
Thanks.
No, no participation, or?
It was because of the week, and everybody was kind of tired, and there was, there was not that many people signed up for it. They just decided it would probably be a different, better at a different time.
Yeah.
If I understand right.
Okay. But the record show that we acknowledged Wellness Committee minutes. And we are up to a discussion decision to amend the county engineer's contract?
Amend the motion.
Yeah. Amend the motion made on August eighth.
And this would be because of the letter that he wrote us last week. He felt the motion was ambiguous and could be interpreted to mean that the engineer accepted the reference language, and he did not accept any amended language, so... Thought it would be a good idea for the board to review and clarify these minutes. I think, did we talk about this after Roger left last week, Tammy? Was it before?
I think we talked about it during our discussion.
Yeah, I thought, yeah, so you would've been gone for it, Roger. Tammy, do you want to repeat that you had gone back through the?
Yeah, so I...
Minutes instead?
I wasn't sure if I had made a mistake in what the, the motion was, so I listened to it, and, um, what I typed was pretty much exactly what Carter had first made the motion, and then later on added to add the per, um...
Per acceptance.
Acceptance, yeah. So if the motion was made, what I typed in the minutes was how the motion was worth it, so... Um, if anything needs to be changed, it'd have to be in the motion.
I mean, really, it's, I, I don't know, I guess it's... I don't feel it's unclear, but it would just be a change of, sort of per, using a different word that maybe is more clear. But, I don't know, as long as we understand what it means, and the engineer understands what it means, I mean, I don't know.
Good morning, Dave.
Good morning, Dave.
Yeah, I guess, I don't, I don't know how else we would clarify those minutes. Doug, for your information, we were talking about your letter from last week, and the agenda item for amending the motion made on August eighth, but, um... I guess, what, I mean, in your letter, it says you feel the motion's ambiguous, and could be interpreted to mean that the engineer accepted the reference language. I... I guess, do you have a suggestion on how to say that differently?
Don't.
Per acceptance?
I mean, I think we clarified it in a couple of meetings with it, but, uh, per acceptance, that would be upon your acceptance, or, and which has not happened, so that's, that's just the board written upon approval of, of the other half of the contract holder, being the engineer. I mean, I think that's fairly clear, whereas we're making the motion. I, I don't know, I don't know what to do.
Have you had any members of the public reach out to you, saying they did not understand the action that was taken?
Yes.
Um, could you direct them to contact their representative? Because I have not heard that from anyone.
Okay. I just want to clear, there's, we have no agreement.
Right.
Right, by the county engineer on any amendment.
I think anyone who is uncertain on that could watch the videos of our board meetings and could easily understand that.
Do you want me to put anything in the minutes regarding that in today's minutes?
Could clarify it in today's minutes, uh, as far as...
If I just write?
Being we held discussion, um...
Discussion was held, uh, motion was clarified, the...
I, I don't know how many different ways you can say that it's conditional on acceptance of the engineer. We could say the engineer has not accepted the terms from that motion, but...
I guess I'll...
Would you like it in the minutes that you have not accepted those terms, Doug, or?
I want to make certain that I have not accepted anything. Twenty years from today, minutes should be written in a way that twenty years from today, fifty years from today, they're clear. When I go back to read minutes from the nineteen, early nineteen hundreds on roads, it, it helps when they are clear. There's no way to interpret it but one way.
Well, the...
So I, that's what I would like, is an interpretation, that there's no way to interpret it but this way.
Um, what if I just put in there, discussion was held with the Cassuth County engineer to clarify the August eighth, two thousand twenty-three motion regarding the county engineer's contract? That the county engineer has not accepted the cha, the proposed change to the contract. Something on that order?
Yeah, that's fine.
Would that be okay, Doug? Do you want me to say again?
It's, I mean, it's board's decision.
Okay.
That's fine.
Yeah, I don't have any issues with that.
Okay.
Do you want a motion to take no action, or just leave it as consensus?
It's just being the record that no action was taken, because technically you can't make a motion to do nothing.
We can take action to not amend that motion, but it...
It's a discussion item, so we don't...
If it's, if it's in the minutes, good enough, that's fine. I didn't think it was necessary to begin with.
Okay, so we're up to construction of the road right away? Uh, there are no requests for construction of the road right away. I have a question, how are we coming on the bridge south of Tyke? The construction of that bridge, they have formed the deck, they're tied in steel, so they're getting close to pouring on that, yes.
The dis, their information, the boards put it in the other agenda next week for Mr. Melber, that is, we want to, they request that we just roll, choose to Class C. So that's going to be on for discussion next week, and so, so you don't have to run it, but...
Okay.
But you know that's going to be on.
Uh, other discussion, I guess, um, the resourcing projects, they have been completed. We are now opening those roads, taking down detours. Talked a little bit about that bridge south of Tyke. The Algonah Airport, they are started, they have started construction, so shortly that road will be closed. It might already be closed. I have not been out there today. And then that DOT project south of Fenton, everything is complete on that, and that is back open. Um, I, we've interviewed for the ledge yard shop, we're looking at some background on some candidates there. Going to be interviewing some transfer station candidates this week. Uh, gravel roads, we had some welcome rain yesterday, today, tomorrow, Thursday if needed, and Friday if needed, we are going to be maintaining gravel roads. Some of them will be ma, maintained twice, just to get, uh, over them, get a cut, good cut on both sides, get the things spread out. Um, we've got one piece of equipment that's down, bankrupt maintainer. However, we do have a spare machine, so that, uh, spare machine's being used in that district. Um, I have plans to purchase a snow blower, snow pusher, and forks for skid loader. The snow blower, snow pusher would be used out in our mechanic shop. Snow blower's about eleven thousand dollars, the pusher's four thousand, and skid loader is about twelve hundred. We have skid loaders for, uh, we have one set of skid, or, one set of, uh, forks for the skid loader, but we're seeing that both of them are being used for, the forks are being used on both of our machines, so that would just be an additional. Um, I guess I'm just asking if the board has concerns with that, before I actually order that.
Is the snow blower only going to be used at the shop, or is it going to be?
Mechanic shop, yes. And the pusher, the mechanic shop, just for that area. We're seeing our Algonah shop, uh, foreman goes and completes. Courthouse added on the, um, EMA building, EMS, whichever the building's name is. And so it delays it just a little bit out there, so... And then our mechanic shop roof needs to be replaced, so I did sign a quote to replace that, and that's a, um, an eighty thousand, eighty-two thousand dollar job, but that's going to be coming through, so... Other than that, I do not have any discussion. I wonder if it'll have rocks on the roof, though, doesn't it? It has rocks, we will take the ballast off and put self-adhere. That's better, or? My, yeah, my opinion, it's, it's better, lasts just a little bit longer, but if you, you ever need to patch anything, it's a lot more simple to patch.
I did have a member of the public reach out to me, is, can I stop in your office after and grab a copy of the, grab a question, bids as you?
We received one bid.
Oh, you only received one?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. Mike, I have a person that asked for it, and if you want a copy, I'll give you one too.
Okay, that's the only one, yeah, okay, sounds good.
Anything else for Doug? Thank you, Doug. Be better.
Thank you, thanks.
I'll get Mark.
I think my writing's bad, but I can't figure that one out.
Oh, Mike. No, it's tiny too, isn't it? Looks like Jim, maybe? But that's it, that's, that's as far as I go. The one above it's not that much better.
Well, it's two initials.
Oh. Okay.
Yeah. I get the two initials, Zach Lubin, so, but McClure Engineering, I have no idea who wrote that.
Dan.
Oh, is it?
How do you get Dan out of that?
You love those signatures, don't you?
It looks like a J to me. Wow.
Should go in the record, it should at least know who signed it.
Thanks, Steve.
That don't look like Dan.
Oh, yeah, that's definitely Dan.
March.
March? Tell me how that's Dan.
Interesting piece.
It kind of looks like a stick person.
Yeah.
It looks like a flower.
I thought it was a flower.
I was thinking that's maybe not.
I don't know.
It's, it's definitely Dan, though.
It's definitely Dan.
I mean, he's the engineer on the project, so I guess that should be pretty straightforward.
Yeah, well, what's the last name?
Weidemeyer.
Oh, yeah, that looks like a W. That does look like a W.
I see the W.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, it's...
Looks more like Win or something like that.
No, it's Weidemeyer.
Josh, you're on approved. You know, you're, you're neutral on this. What does that look like?
Well, I can see the A in the end, the B not so much, the W is definitely there.
Yeah, the W I can get.
There, there's an I in there, I can tell that, a dot above.
Because of the dot.
March, are you ready? Now that we...
Analyze.
Laughed about the signatures.
Yeah. The first one that we have in front of us is change order six for DD sixty sub one. It is signed by the contractor and the engineer.
And this would be the last one, this is the final rectification of quantities.
Net change is forty thousand eight hundred ninety-eight ninety-nine.
Yep.
Any questions from the board? If not, I entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Stecker, second by?
I'll second it.
Rector? Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carried unanimous.
And then the pay estimate is the sub final, so we'd only have one more after this.
Okay, in front of us, we have the pay app eight for DD sixty sub one. Amount due is seventy-three thousand three hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seventy-two cents. It is to Zachary Lubin, so, and McClure Engineering signs it, and it is Weidemeyer. Any questions on the pay app? Seeing none?
All right, this is part of, um, project, when was this project done?
It was, it was started, mm, last fall. Um, so there is a little bit of work that they had done before, before the end of the year, but then most of it was during the summer.
Okay.
And then after, after this here, um, I believe when I talked to Dan, I think he said they had the final pay estimate stuff put together, but then they'll go through and put all the documents together for the completion hearing, and we'll have that, and then we'll close out the project.
Yeah, projects actually have been done for a little bit, most of it.
Yeah, a little while here. Um, it's all been televised, it's all, I mean, overall, it's all looked really good, so... We've got videos for all that.
I would entertain a motion to approve pay app eight for DD sixty sub one.
So moved.
Motion by Stecker, second by? I'll second it. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carried unanimous. March, you want to talk about the next thing, approve waiver?
This one submitted by Joe Moshe. Do we want a waiver? Do we want to, Joe's not here, do we want to move on?
Joe wanted to be here.
See global enterprise?
Yeah, yeah. He's the one that submitted the request.
Okay.
He has the information.
I don't know that we have any other option besides...
And global assets, so it would be the same version.
Okay. Well, we'll jump over and go to a discussion decision on DD twenty main three.
Same thing.
Same thing. So then we'll have to go repairs.
Yeah, and this, this is a repair request, we actually talked about it during the hearing and stuff, when we had Spencer here, about the other repairs that were going to be done on the east side of town. I didn't realize we didn't have a, a piece of paper for it, so this is just to kind of follow that up.
Yeah, in Lakota.
Yeah, on the east side of Lakota.
Yeah. Anybody got any questions on the pre-interview here, in Lakota with the trees and, uh, culvert underneath the railroad, and to refresh your memory, it's all been a pain.
Right, for quite a while.
Yeah. So would I, would entertain a motion for somebody, for, to allow Mr. Stecker to do his repair?
On the function? I'll second it.
That was Josh and Carter. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carried unanimous. We are up to that discussion with our auditor.
Okay, so, let's see here. Next week, we have a bunch of hearings scheduled. At eight thirty, we have the budget amendment hearing, and then approving the resu, resolution for the budget amendment, amendment hearing. At eight thirty-five, we have the, uh, open the sealed bids for the farm lease, and then awarding the bids for the farm lease. And then we have bid letting for DD sixty sub four tile improvement. And that's all we have so far on the agenda for next week. Today, our office is open till five o'clock PM for elections. Um, it's the last day to, um, withdraw as a candidate for the city school election, or object to an applicant for the city school. So we will be open till five. Um, we have set up and made available our new Facebook page for the Cassuth County Auditor's Office, um, which we have been putting election stuff on there. We, we, it was opened right before, um, we closed the courthouse, so that was posted on there. We got a lot of good reviews on that, um, and so far, our election reviews have been pretty good. So we're hoping that this will be a good way to, to reach people. So if you want to go on that site and like it, follow it, and share it, please feel free to do that, because the more people Cassuth County we reach, the, the better, the better it will be, the more use for it will be for us.
Very sure, I am.
And then, um, we have the security... Donna has a plan to do the security, or, as her security planning for the, for the courthouse coming up. We thought about maybe postponing it until after January. With everything happening upstairs with, you know, um, new doors and new security, um, we thought that maybe, um, closing the courthouse to all, to the public, so that all employees can go through that, know what our changes are, and do have, um, law enforcement come in and do, uh, a security training for all of us might be better, than just doing a quick sit-down and tell everybody what to do. But Donna wanted me to mention that to you and see what you guys thought, if you want to go ahead with what's scheduled here, or if you want to postpone it till January, we can look at something bigger.
I, I think doing more thorough thing would be more useful.
Okay.
I mean, if we can do it before January, so we're not in the middle of budgets and everything, then we could do it, but... But yeah, I, whatever works.
It's going to have to be January before that would be scheduled, so...
And then it will be complete, you know, we'll know.
What, where, where the new doors are and all that kind of stuff?
Yeah.
How do we act, where to go if there's an emergency, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay.
It'll work.
Okay, sounds good. And, let's see. And I think that is all I have. We haven't heard anything back from Amy or the community, they're still reviewing our handbook, so as soon as, um, we hear back from them, we'll put that on the agenda. They're still reviewing that, so, that's all I have.
Jack, do you have any meetings left?
Yeah, I had a, we're in charge of yesterday's start, nine o'clock, the ad hoc, approved, uh... Yeah, I had a, we had a job that yesterday started at nine o'clock with ad hoc, approved forty-five thousand dollars for Palau County, uh, kids program. And then we got a finance committee meeting, went through all the budgets, carryovers and everything. And then went into the general meeting. And, um, um, approved all, all of the changes, the forty-five thousand dollars for Palau County. And at the end, we had three program reports, Mariana Wilson for Sioux County Healthy Kids, uh, David Program update, Sharon Hope, uh, for Healthy Beginnings, and the David Program Report. And Shelley Skjekke, Skj, Skj, again, it's S-K-J-E-I-D, I don't know how to pronounce her name. She's with Mitsu, she gave the report for the, for that. And, um, so, this is. But I guess, I guess normal. They have forty kids that they have getting tuition assistance to.
Carter?
Uh, I, well, we had a North Iowa community action meeting last, uh, last week. I missed that with everything going on last week, um, but it was mostly in going over insurance, updating health insurance stuff, and all that exciting things, so, um, I don't know. That, that particular committee, you, you sit there, they don't even ask for no votes, so it's, uh, um, you know, sometimes it's, I don't know how much of a difference you make to make one. But, uh, I think that was mostly what was, was talking about was health insurance. And talking to Cindy over there, so. Uh, I do have a care connections meeting this afternoon. We'll be going over, um, new contracts with Horizons Unlimited, and then Prairie Ridge, um, with mental health services, and as well as we have a couple of project requests from Upper Des Moines Opportunity and, and the Palau Wellness Suicide Prevention Program. Um, and, uh, then hearing updates from different departments and things, so. So, yep, that's, and I, I don't know if we touched on last week, um, but just went down, I think it was two weeks ago, we went down to training, on house file seven eighteen, um, Tammy and, and Christie and myself and Kyle, um, were all down there for that. And that, that was very good. I thought it was helpful and explained a lot, and it's a lot to take in for how we're going to look at assessments and budgets and stuff this year, so I'd say, but I, I was glad I went.
Jack?
I had no meetings last week, just our normal discussion about pipeline stuff.
Stank?
I had, um, Central Iowa on CHDC on Friday, um, we had some discussion about a possible solar project, um, they've been looking at that for a while, but it might be something that'd be worthwhile at this point in time, where it was just brief discussion. Um, and then had quite a bit of discussion about detention counseling billing, um, think there's some confusion on what the difference is between that and just normal responsibilities of staff with de-escalation, so we ended up stopping that for members, affiliates, and non-members, so for everyone. And it was a good meeting, but it was a long one. It was almost three hours, so. But I think that's most of it.
Didn't have anything else but Summit, and now they're asking what are we going to do, and I don't know what we should do in the county. With the new rulings that might be able to stop, the only one we could stop would be the one out north if you didn't zone it correctly. I don't know if you read the last comments?
Comments from who?
From the Summit, or from the Shelby hearing, that we can't control anything with safety or zoning, but you can with the, I mean, with safety, but you can with zoning. Yet the zoning committee were to meet and claim that Summit, or that Navigator didn't meet the zoning recommendation requirements.
I think there's a lot of aspects to that, but I don't know. You talking from the Shelby court decision?
Yeah.
I'm not well versed on those specifics, I guess, but, um, I think biggest thing now is to see what comes out from the utility board hearings, 'cause I think they should be getting close to finishing up. I think there's some landowner testimony yet, but most of it.
That's it.
Most of it is done, yeah, so.
I, I think what you're getting after is zoning in regards to type of, uh, land use rather than setbacks. 'Cause that's what the Shelby County case pretty much said, you cannot
Use setbacks.
Use setbacks. That's not something that, uh, the counties have jurisdiction over, but, 'cause I mean, that's kinda what you're getting at, is it's zoned, not for that purpose. You know, I mean, that, yeah.
Which I think that would apply to both pipelines.
It would have to.
I mean.
Yeah, we'd have no control on Summit, 'cause they're not gonna take any CO2 off of the pipeline, or off the ethanol plant in this county.
Sure, yep.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Can I interrupt, I guess?
Yep, you can interrupt.
Uh, this is Blake Stevens. Blake came down to take care of some business, but I thought I'd give him the opportunity to introduce everybody.
Morning.
Uh, Marge Mergen and Tammy Eaton. Tammy is the auditor. Um, Roger Jarks, Kyle Stecker, Josh Whacter, uh, Carter Nath, and Jack Platt, so. Anyway, just wanted to give you guys an opportunity to meet and sort of.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thanks.
So, think about it. I don't know what we can do there. More court cases.
Yep. I believe they're appealing the Shelby County one.
Yeah.
So, I don't know status on that, but I believe they're appealing it.
Well, they have in North Dakota and South Dakota, they're appealing that too, and.
No, I mean, I think Shelby County is.
Yeah. We are up to discussion decision on the waiver for DD four flat eleven. For all who request it. Open for discussion. Joe, do you have?
Yeah, I'm just, uh, I just put that on the agenda, because I left one guy off, but I think I'm gonna do a lot.
Why don't you come up a ways so we, so we can hear?
I just, uh, thought that, uh, as long as you're letting one guy off, you should let everybody, if they ask for it, you should treat everybody the same. That's all, and that's why I put it on the agenda.
Marge, have we gotten any other requests?
We would be in, 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 uh, waiver that, of course, nobody notified. Uh, it's your problem.
Okay, done it in the past, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's what we had done last week, was the request.
So, I don't know if we have to do any action on this today, because you did it last week.
We allowed it for that.
Was it?
Would there be any difference in the waivers? Between situation, honorable situation?
I didn't read the dream. From last week's one come along.
Oh.
I don't know what we did last week on it.
Last week, we had a landowner who had requested on the drain port, let him have an open ditch, um, to possibly have a waiver. And the board agreed to for that one person, 'cause only one person had asked at that one.
So that waiver was at five percent then?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else in particular for that waiver that?
That was, we did ten years.
Ten year, yeah.
Ten years, okay.
Yeah.
On that, on that drain?
On drain.
For.
For lab eleven, you, you made it for everybody, or just for one land?
We did it for, there was only one request last week.
But you didn't limit it.
We just approved it for one.
We approved it for one.
Well, then we'll have to approve it for another one today.
For anyone, if anyone who requests one for that. Like, they could blank it one.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah.
What date did you put on it then for?
Should be done.
Yeah, should be done. I mean, you, you'll have to have a date on it.
Well.
September thirtieth this month.
Is that what?
That would have to be this week.
Is that what the board wishes to do?
That's what Marge would need it for paperwork, so.
Right.
Yeah, I mean.
You want it before September thirtieth, or after thirtieth?
Before the thirtieth.
On or before?
That's a Saturday, so close the business on the twenty ninth.
Twenty ninth. So you wanna do it the twenty ninth, you don't wanna do it on the thirtieth?
No, close the business twenty ninth.
So I would entertain a motion to that effect, ten years, five percent, ending on September twenty ninth.
Yeah, the five percent's already set with the warrants, so I don't think we need that in the motion, but I would make that for, motion for anyone for ten years. Add ending on the twenty ninth, that close the business.
Carter, you want a second, Matt?
I can do that.
Any more discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then we are up to DD twenty main three, twenty fifteen assessment on main two.
Okay, the reason I found this was because of what was going on with the DD four lap two in the back, and look bills and stuff. And, um, if you, if you look at my, the official bill, I put a map in there for you, so that you can follow along. You might wanna pull it out, so you can watch as I go through the presentation. But on my bill, they talk about this drain twenty lap two H main one, that's what they asked the money for. That'd be this bill here that the treasurer sends out. And so I went and took a look at where that was at, and the reason I, I noted that going through all my bills is because I had done a little investigation on this, um, during the assessment on fall twenty thirteen on DD twenty. And if you go down where it's in blue there, they charged two di- two different, I'm gonna call them trusts. And then they transferred that money to, uh, funds number fifty-one one oh three and fifty-one one oh four. And if you look at that, I have that fund in here. This is fund fifty-one one oh four. That's got the same legal description on it that my bill had on it. So then I went to the plat map. That'd be your map here, and it's highlighted in yellow. And I said, well, jeez, you know, I don't have any ground on that. So I approached these people, and I'm, I'm wanting a, a bill redistributed, 'cause that, that was, I don't want any ground up there. It's my first deal. So then, when I approached, uh, the auditor on it, they sent me this work request out. That'd be this one right here. I got full process here. And the problem we have with this, I don't have a problem with it, you know, look, I know this work was done at one time. I just don't know when it was built out. Um, it had to be, I put it in on twenty thirteen May. That's a little tight for you guys to get it filled out, so it probably would've gotten built out in twenty fourteen or twenty, sometime after that. But when you look at the legal description, or the description on the, on the, uh, work order, we're within fifty foot of Union Sewell Wildlife Fund, so I highlighted that in red on your map. And where that work was done is where the blue arrow is pointing. Now that's, that's DD twenty main two. If you look that up. So what happens is, is they just decided to throw that on main three. And so that's a disproportionate, um, we've paid a disproportionate amount of that bill 'cause we're actually covering everybody on, uh, uh, sections nine, fifteen, sixteen, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three. That's where that should've been spread. Instead of instead of on main three. So, I don't know. This is kind of a training program for you new guys and the new auditor. This has all happened before, and it just so happened we got this last two lap four thing going on. I was going through my bills, and I kinda noted this legal description, so I think something should be done about that, 'cause I think the property owners on main three were unfairly charged for the work, if, and that's if this work order is, has, has not been spread before.
I didn't hear the last part.
That's if this work order hasn't been spread before. I've had a lot of you guys doing that. Spreading things more than once, that's before your time, taking, I'm not trying to I'm just trying to straighten my bill out here. That's all I'm doing.
So for clarification, Joe, just so I'm understanding, um, so the first thing that you talked about, um, I think Marge talked to you about that there was a mistake made, and then that was changed, correct? That was fixed that year?
Twenty fifteen.
In twenty fifteen? Are, are you in agreement with that, that that was corrected in twenty fifteen or not?
You guys can do whatever you want with yours, the way I understand it.
No.
So.
How would it explain? Did you agree with that?
That's right. Well, no, I, you know, here, I, I don't know what to believe from the office anymore. From the stuff I see coming out of your office. I, I just, you know, this is the, this is the official bill I got, okay? That's where I go by. And that's what alerted me to it, okay? So now this other deal here, I'm not gonna agree with what you explained, because it, that still is not, um, spread to the right district. If you look at the work order, this is the work order that you sent with that explanation.
And so you think it should've been spread to
Main two.
Main two instead of main.
Yeah, it's clear. If you look at the, if you take a real close, we're fifty foot back cement structure and, from the Union Sewell. So fifty foot, when you look at where main three starts, that's just about a half a mile west of there. I mean, I gotta highlight it on the map. So when you start looking at that, look, if you're, if you redo it, people up on section nine, sixteen, fifteen, twenty-two, and twenty-one are gonna be assessed.
So you think it should be? It, it probably is B two, but on the map, it would probably be okay. So, just so you can hear what we're talking about. So, just so you can hear what we're talking about, so I'm going to pass this map down so that you guys can see it too. The map that was done at the time shows here main three and main two, which is kind of confusing the way it looks. Marge thinks that it is possible that Joe was right, that it should have been main two and not main three. So that is something we will have to look at and see if we can go over it with Joe and see what we can come up with. If that's okay with Marge, and that's okay with you guys. It is, the maps aren't the greatest, so, but I think it does deserve looking into. And the bill you got was in two thousand fifteen, is that right?
Yeah, and you know, I would have never even looked at it when we got this DD four lap, you know, so you know, I'm just, and then and the only reason I noticed this description is because of what I've been seeing on, on up there, you know, on your spreadsheet on twenty thirteen, I went and looked into that, because we have, where you spread another nine hundred and fourteen, you didn't. Nine hundred and fourteen thousand is spread up there for interest.
So this is two of the warrants.
And so then I looked up every one of those trust funds, and then they go and transfer out to, one of them was fifty-one, one oh four, which is what we're talking about, we're talking nine hundred and fourteen thousand on that little piece of pipe there, you know, up here. That's a lot of money. You could do the whole main for that just by
This side of the main, or was it on that side of the main, or was it on the main?
So it looks a little funny.
Who's that?
You know.
What supervisor district does that?
That would be an empty rock at the time.
Rogers at the time, and he might have been submitted, so Don's record is on there.
Don signed it.
Would you be able to look at it with us?
Well, we don't know, because we'd have to go back to Wrightsill and figure out where he did the work.
Actual location.
The actual location, because it would make a big difference on
And we, and we don't have GPS coordinates for repair like we do.
We have a map right there.
That's a rough estimate, because you know those aren't always accurate.
Well, I don't
Well, that's, that's the border.
So how do we figure out, what, what do we need to do to make sure it's being filled to the appropriate?
Then he's talking DD eighty, main three on his damn bill.
But
That's what chances you.
I, I realize that, but how do you know?
Well, I'm talking about an open ditch also on some of this stuff, so. It's
Yeah, I, we could probably need the
I mean, we were following, following time, we, we got a private pipe that goes into that box.
There's.
Yeah, you got private tile that don't send it there.
Yeah. So we fixed it county main, county main, it's in here at that box.
Which on the map here, I mean, those, those move, so it shows the label that moves. That would have been before we had digital maps, so that was the label on the hard paper.
Gotcha, yeah, I can see where that would get.
I mean, it's Can you guys see that a little bit? Yeah, I would say talk to Wrightsill, find out location and, and look at the actual invoice and see what we can come up with from there.
What is DD eighty, main three? That's what it says on there. See, it's, it calls it DD eighty, main three, if you look at the, the repair request. Well, DD eighty, that, we know lateral two is in Union Soul.
Well, it goes, do you want to see the map, Joe? Yeah, show me that map.
Yeah, see, and I think main two falls, they're down main three, so it's the same map I got, and it's the same map that I gave you. I don't know if it's any clearer on the newer map, but that wasn't present at the time that this was done, so you got to have it prepared, you know? But I, I'm just saying from what was described on the bill was way different. And, and that's what alerted me to it.
We don't know what size this tile is either, on main two, do we?
Exactly.
Ten inch? Sixteen there.
This is twenty-two.
On the electronic map, it shows sixteen here.
Was it showing main two?
Well, I know that's, the other section doesn't have a size.
That's ten inch of further.
So you got a sixteen on main three, according to this map that I gave you.
Right.
And then, I don't know, what does it say right down there by the slough there? They got
Twenty-two.
That's a twenty-two there.
Yeah, but there's a box there that you
Yeah, there's a box. Everything feeds into a box, then it goes, then it goes across the fence into a open, it's kind of like an open ditch.
There's a box right here.
It, does that say thirty?
I think it's twenty-two. You'd have to, I, I'd look at your map, because it's not highlighted. The highlight kind of takes away from, I think it's twenty-two probably there.
How big a tile did you end up going in there? Is that an eighteen? Twenty-four?
Yeah, and we, we basically, well, basically we take the place of lap three. Because our, our private tile runs the same as lap three.
What goes to where your dad used to live?
No, well, there's just a little part there that you can see. It goes to twenty-one, that was at Christ House Place, that was always where.
The best thing I can say today is we're not going to take any action, we'll research it a little further. No action will be taken, let the record show that, Mike.
Joe, Marge and I will look into this and get ahold of you. If you don't hear from us by the end of the week, give us a call.
Or in the week?
Yeah, we'll, we'll try to get something done on it this week.
Fine, I can give it till the end of the year, I mean, you know, I know you guys are busy, you know, with tax.
Yeah, it's not
We, but give us a call and check in to see how we're doing with it, but we will check into it, see what we can find out. Check with Wrightsills and see whether that was put.
You want me to check with Wrightsill?
You can if you want to, we'll check also, but it doesn't hurt for both of us to.
Just visit the board, unless you want to all get together.
And, and I think we can do that after we get information, I think it'd be helpful if we all sit down and figure it out together, on a, on a Sunday.
Yeah.
You never paid an outlet fee for that private tile?
Well, we should get off the district like J. L., J. Dolce, because we got our own tile. We maintain it ourselves.
That, that shouldn't change your schedule for the ditch, it would only be for tile.
We'll treat everybody fair. We got a lot of privates, we got two privates going into there, and we should let off all of the districts like the three P.
There's separate schedules for tiles and ditches.
And how we got our own, we're still, we're still paying full load on, on main three, okay? We're not like J. Dolce.
Anything else to come before the board? Anybody have anything else we need to do today? Not, I have an uncanned motion to adjourn.
Thank you very much.
Second.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Motion carried.